I'll call this regular meeting of the Grafton Planning Board to order Monday, May 20th, 2024. Roll call.
Mr. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Robbins.
Present.
I am here. Mr. Van Keterman.
Here.
And Mr. Hassenger.
I'm here.
Our associate member, Ms. Presleyhan.
I'm here.
And staff, our planner Fiona Coughlin.
Present.
And Talia Alward.
Present.
Okay. First item on the agenda as always is public input. This is a chance for anyone who wants to talk to us about something that's within our purview and not otherwise on the agenda tonight, has a chance to do so. Anybody who wants to let us know in the room, on the air, apparently not. What are the action items before the discussion items?
Yep.
Draft decision request for project plan review. P R R 2024 dash oh one Willard 55, Willard Street.
So, Mr. Chair, this is the the temporary rounds room decision that was drafted after the closing of the hearing at the last meeting. This was uploaded to the project page about a week in advance. Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward project. We all know the specifics. Any members on the board have any questions about what I've included here? But I just made a point to, you know, stick to our typical project plan review decision outline. You know, this is more of like an expedited permit. So there's not always a lot of conditions, but it's pretty, pretty basic.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I reviewed the decision and it all looks good to me.
Great.
Couldn't find a typo in all those.
Past Dave, yes. I know. That's wow. I'm feeling proud of myself.
Yeah, it's a definite test.
Nothing, nothing.
She always leaves, you know, something in there.
Nothing, nothing leaped out at me.
She leaves something in there so that we know that you've, anyway.
I move the board approve the decision as drafted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Van Keterman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Lot release, the writings, D P 2020 dash oh three, 88 Adams Road.
Righties. So the board will probably recall, we recently approved the bond for phase one of the riding subdivision. This is the natural subsequent request for the release of those lots. So they're requesting the release of lots LL two, LL four, LC one, LC three, and LC five. And the plan, Natalia so kindly uploaded a map just so it's very clear. It's lots here. Because we have the bond in place, you know, we're, we're in a good position. No cause for concern. So if the board has any other additional questions or notices any nits, let me know.
We, we've now got all the language right in
Yes.
bond release, the street names.
Yes, that, that was corrected and approved. Yes. That was a good catch by Dave.
Terms of the, the other preconditions for a lot release are that the developer is making adequate progress.
Right.
It's code in from their subdivision rules and regulations. The board shall review the request in terms of progress of the developer generally and in terms of the construction schedule, condition of the site, compliance with applicable regulations and requirements, and surety. Surety, we've taken care of as we just noted, all the rest of it. Graves has, our, the town's review of the progress of the project relative to those five lots is adequate.
Yes, that's correct. Graves has been going out and monitoring the construction. They are moving along quite well. And members of the board might remember that they were in here not too long ago requesting a modification to their definitive plan for, for an extension, but they are making great progress and drove by the site.
And the, the lot release will enable them to get building permits for these five lots and act to start building houses.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Which could be considered progress from their point of view.
Maybe if they get the street signs right, I might vote for it.
Yes, yes, they, we are, we are in discussions with them and they are working on that and that should become.
Including the private way.
Yes, I've made a point to bring that up.
Okay. Any discussion, questions?
A motion to approve the lot release might be in order?
I think it probably would be in order.
Consider it made.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Van Keterman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Acceptance of withdrawal without prejudice of the special permit only, S P 2024 dash oh three. S P A seven, at seventeen and twenty seven Upton Street.
Mr. Chair.
The site plan approval request would remain, however, I think Fiona has.
Yes, yes. So I recommend that the board pass over this until we get a final confirmation from council as to the permitting process. The board might, is aware that we have included this area as an overlay district in our MBTA communities overlay that passed a town meeting in the fall. Based on the letter that we've gotten from the Attorney General, it's been very interesting and confusing figuring out which path forward. If it's like plan approval, if it's special permit and site plan approval. And we've, I've been engaged in a back and forth with our council. So rest assured that there's a permitting path forward, but we just need to be very cautious about what, what that is and make sure that we are in compliance with section three A. And, and not just making sure that we're doing everything correctly, basically. So before, I, I think that we, I would suggest that we pass over this and we can take it up at a later meeting. And then we can, you know, proceed as, as we would normally for now. And once I get clarification and I can actually meet with council, I will update the board accordingly, but.
So, so we'll go forward right now under the special permit and site plan.
Yes.
Posting and perhaps modify or narrow our, what we make decisions based on and ask about once we have further guidance.
Yes, that's correct. Yes. So for, for now, we should.
Yeah, I guess this is another benefit of being one of the very first to enact.
Yes.
The MBTA.
Yes.
So it's, it's also a consequence of the somewhat, somewhat unique is technically not, not a appropriate way to say things. It's either unique or not, but the way we approached our MBTA compliance was not the way most communities have. Because we leveraged existing zoning to the degree that we did, there are now, so there's now some ambiguity or, or lack of clarity regarding which zoning by law procedures apply in this, to this particular project.
Right, right, exactly.
Until we, until we clarify that, it's best to proceed, as you said, it's best to proceed as a special permit slash site plan approval application. Recognizing that possibly some aspects of that may not need to be pursued much further. But until we get clarity, let's, let's assume this.
Yes.
Let's not pass over, let's table, you think?
Table, table it to a future meeting.
Yeah, well, you can.
Do you want a motion to that?
Or, or you want me to declare? No, do it.
A motion. A motion wouldn't hurt.
So I, I move that we table item two C until.
While we table it.
Yes.
Then we'll take, we'll have a vote to take from the table.
We can take it off the table at the appropriate time.
I don't know when we've ever done that. Okay, that was a move and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Van Keterman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Watch forthcoming agenda on that, further progress. Discussion items. I received a request from our planner to take three D first. If there's no objection, we, we will. All right. UPS discussions, logistics, time, place, date, G C T V update, hearings procedure.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I will just give an overview of my updates and then I'll hand it over to Mr. DeToma, who's here on behalf of G C T V. So I have been in constant, seems like communication with the town of Shrewsbury on these logistics. They are handling, you know, room, room prep. They're going to be generating the Google Meet link. They're going to be doing some of that logistical and administrative leg work that we're following suit. We have posted our legal ad in our template that we normally would. We are, again, it's going to be on June 10th, it's going to be 7:00 P M in the select board room at Shrewsbury Town Hall. So that, that isn't changing. One thing that I will, I have been in communication with the Shrewsbury staff on hearing procedure and how best to proceed. And I had some suggestions that, you know, we, we don't have to dive too deep into it for this meeting. But I, you know, in the past, joint meetings between other communities or other boards, even in Grafton, you know, call to order, typical roll call process, one town goes, one follows. The layout of the meeting will be a project intro, public input and kind of a high level overview as we've discussed. The boards will each have an opportunity to ask questions and then there will be comments from the public and adjournments. So that's the very high level overview of procedure that I'm still working out with Shrewsbury staff. But they don't seem to have any concerns about process, but I will continue to follow up with them. And with that, Bob, I'll have you provide an update from, of the communications that you've had with your colleague in Shrewsbury, please.
Evening, everyone. Do you have specific questions?
I need a lot more volume. Go ahead, well, try it.
Hi, I'm looking, I'm asking if you are looking for a specific overview or do you have questions that you want to ask?
I don't know what he's.
He's, he's asking if the board would like an overview or has specific questions. But Bob, I think an overview would make the most sense, just because there has been a lot of back and forth between yourself and your colleague and a lot of updates and rapid succession, so.
Okay. So my colleague at Shrewsbury Media Connection, Mark Sarah, who actually held the position in Grafton decades ago. He and I have been in discussion, and even though our two systems are not necessarily compatible, there is a workaround called an H L S feed, which I'm told that our system can be programmed to accept that feed. I've also been in discussion with our common vendor that we use, and that's Danielle from Oprah's Corporation. She confirmed this plan. We will accept the feed and then it will go out to the local viewers in Grafton. It will also be streamed via the internet.
Also streamed where?
Via the internet.
Streamed via the internet.
Oh.
On our usual streaming presumably.
Correct. So that's where we stand right now. We have to set up a test link to, to confirm that it's actually going to work and it's actually viable. That's coming up in the next 10 days to two weeks, depending on Mark's schedule. Vendor said she would come to Grafton to do the programming. So that's where we stand at the moment. I'm told that Shrewsbury only uses Google meetings and does not use Zoom. So people have the option of attending the meeting in person or connecting via the Google link or watching Google.
Yes, Bob, that, that's correct. They, yeah, they use Google Meet. That's their alternative to Zoom. It's, it's just.
Rough equivalent of Zoom.
Yeah, it is very similar. It's just a different platform with a different meeting link. So don't anticipate problems there, but.
Do you have a ETA on validating, if you are planning on validating ahead of time, that the Google, their streaming service will work with our system to have a test to make sure that it is working?
Till the vendor comes and programs my equipment, which hasn't been set up yet. But that, once that link is established, the test should come pretty quickly after that.
My concern on timing is just to make sure that we've tested it in enough time that we could reschedule and change the, the plan if we need to for this, for this meeting.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't test it the day of. Try to get it done as quickly as possible.
June 10th. So you don't have a lot of time if it's going to be June 10th.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then with Google Meet, do we know, does the board have the same capabilities to allow all of the public to join it, but not to speak or be involved in the meeting unless we explicitly recognize someone?
That should be allowed. It's, it's very similar.
We're going to have to somehow publish in our agenda how people do that.
Yeah, we'll make it very clear in all our meeting materials and agendas, et cetera, that, the link that we're using.
I'm very, very concerned that we give this full coverage. We succeed in giving this full coverage. This is probably the biggest project Grafton's ever seen on the Grafton side of the line. There are, most all of it is on the Grafton side of the line, except the driveway, if I remember. And it's how many hundred million dollars?
Lots.
So I can certainly expect concern from the Grafton side, and I don't want us to start off with a defective first hearing. And also, I'm, I'm, we've had joint meetings, we meet with a board of selectmen, for example. But this is the first special permit hearing I ever recall having between two separate boards. And I'm, so I don't know what, what the hazards are. But for example, we, we have different rules, even for our public hearings, we may have different rules than they have. And I don't know if having one person chairing, you know, someone who isn't familiar with our special hearing, special permit hearing, to be running the meeting. I, if, if it were principally limited to presentations without interaction, without interactive opportunity, then I think it would be okay. So.
That, that is the bulk of what that.
But you mentioned questions and whatnot.
Right. I mean, that, you know, as part, part of any typical hearing process, you know, we do need to account for that as well. But it really is a preliminary introductory.
Part of the hearing that might be appealed to court at some day. If, if it was, if, if, if somebody wasn't happy with one of our decisions. We need to be really sure that we really do it right. In any case, Bob, I certainly expect that you're up in Shrewsbury, they're going to make a recording, a, a safety recording, a backup recording, so that if all else fails, you'll at least be able to take that and put it up on our YouTube and our server, right?
I'm assuming, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm assuming that if it's running through our server in the cable cast system, there's probably going to be the function to record locally, but I will confirm that when we.
No, I understand all that, but when that transmission breaks down, then we have nothing. I'm saying there should be a tape recorder and it should be a, you know, a, a disk drive. Capturing a copy of their coverage from their end. So that the breakdown, if a breakdown happens between there and Grafton, we have, we have a fallback.
Shrewsbury has confirmed that, that, that is, they will have a backup copy and will be recording. They can share it with us. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
The, I don't think we have the answer to this offhand, but the question, if I remember correctly, when the public link for our Zoom, they cannot use the chat function to, to talk to.
But we're not, we're not connecting in Zoom at all.
Right.
Right. But Google Meet, or whatever it is that we're using with Google, if they have that function and if Shrewsbury doesn't typically disable that, or if they don't know how to disable it, I want to make sure we can capture that in the recording in minutes and somehow being able to share it to the town as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Google, Google Meet does have a chat function and I believe that they monitor it as we typically would.
We typically, for my understanding, shut that off for our public connection to Zoom, so we don't get the questions through Google chat for the Zoom chat. So I think that's something that might be a difference between how we typically run hearings and how Shrewsbury might. That it'd be, that could be concerning to figure it logistics for.
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm how, how they typically handle it, but.
And either way, we want to make sure that that is captured and if it is public and chat is enabled, that that's captured for record in many ways.
Right, right, right. Yeah, we'll make sure that we capture in the record.
I understand that we really need to do this, this way for the first hearing. But boy, it would have been a lot easier to just do something up there and do something down here. Cause it's going to be two hearings, separate hearings with separate issues going forward from there. If, does anybody else have any input? Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Welcome.
Thank you, Bob.
Good night.
All right. May have time for some of these. There we are. Common traffic study update.
Yes, so I met with the Historic District Commission the other day and I've also been corresponding with the Chief Crapo of the Traffic Safety Committee about, and, and the Town Administrator's Office about the need for an updated traffic study for the common. We've been hearing, I've, I've been hearing this a lot from a lot of folks. And there is an opportunity to go after a grant for $25,000 for the M D I program that has no match requirement for the town. And I've actually been in contact with the, the program manager back and forth a lot. And she's strongly encouraging us to apply. So I just, my, I, I put this in here because I just wanted the board to be aware, you know, we, we have discussed this in the past and my goal was just build consensus and make sure that all applicable parties are on the same page. Cause I know that there have been, obviously there's been a study done in the past in 2012, and I believe that there was another one done before that. And there's been like some hiccups with implementing those plans. So I just want to make sure everybody's concerned, small applicable stakeholders are out there. So when I go after the grant, I can make sure to structure it correctly. I know there's been some back and forth about signalization in the past in the district and with how rapidly Grafton is growing, that we might trigger some, a need for signalization. But really the update is that I'm going to apply for this grant and that the grant should require, you know, a community engagement subsection, as well as stakeholder interviews and a consultant will work closely with my department and all, all the other stakeholders to make sure that we're doing, you know, doing this the right way. This is one of the goals of the select board as well, to do an updated traffic study. And I know that this board is, is in favor of, of seeing this. So the deadline is June 5th, so I will be working on that this week and we'll send it, send it off through the community one stop portal. I did, there is some notes from the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meeting last year where they did talk about the need for this. That's a copy of their meeting minutes, just as extra documentation for the board. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the grant and, but, but right now it's just more of a, I'm confirming that I'm going for it.
Yeah, I, I was interested, this is the first I've ever seen of that 2012 study. It wasn't shared. And I was very interested to find that it at least mentioned my favorite solution.
I noticed that as well, reading through it.
Yeah. Unfortunately, they dismissed it because it's a little further around the other way. Only heading south towards Upton from Worcester Street. That's the only one that has a little longer to go. And so I didn't think that dismissing it on that basis, as they seem to have, was really the best answer because most of the other answers involve changing roads, putting in intersections and putting up traffic lights. And you know, if we can do something that works and maintains some of the character of the common as it is and has been, and it would be really good. So I just want, I just want to encourage whatever path you take to get a study to, maybe they should even talk to us.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And yeah, we'll, we'll continue to talk about this. But yeah, that was obviously a key priority of the Historic District Commission. And you know, I learned from them that actually some of the, out of the, I believe, six concepts that were proposed in the prior plan, little bits and pieces were kind of used and to address issues and, or more of a piecemeal fashion. But we, it's very clear, we need a comprehensive overview, you know, and with all the trucks going through and what have you, it's time. So.
Yeah, I was, could ask, does the grant, that as far as you know, cover the ability to more than just traffic flow, assess safety in the, because I know the, the trucks accidents, miracles just going straight into the common from Upton Street.
Right, right, right. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there is a, a safety component. I'm going to make sure to include that in my ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I think everybody, can we agree that everybody is in favor of getting on it?
Emphatic.
Make, make it so.
Especially if, if we get a grant for it.
Yeah, well, no, make, make the application. So.
Yes.
It sounds like everybody's in favor and no one's against, I mean, a free study. Hey, that everybody, that everybody's been asking for. All right. Two minutes. Is two minutes enough for the two items or even one of them?
Yeah.
Maybe the terrace part.
Actually, we don't, we don't actually have to start on the thought of half that.
I will be quick. I'll make sure there's a lot of folks here tonight, so.
The V M U bylaw.
You want to start with the V M U bylaw. So, so members of the board might know that we, one of our articles got defeated at town meeting. The language that we used was standard language that was used in other sections of the bylaw. But you know, I did agree with the gentleman that spoke up, maybe we could be more clear. And it just, it was just a, in my opinion, it, it was an indicator that this really does need like a, a comprehensive revamp and trying to address some of the issues in this, in the piecemeal fashion that we were doing at town meeting isn't going to cut it. So what I'm working on with C M R P C is we're, we're going to go after an E E A grant to have some, a professional from their organization come in and significantly revamp that bylaw and improve it so that it's, makes just more sense, aligns better with town goals. And as we know, and Dave presented to us a few meetings ago, there's a, a very diverse array of land uses that are allowed in the V M U districts. And sometimes the requirements that are asked of applicants doesn't always make sense. Plus a very, very specific and there's no real wiggle room. And the goal is to save, you know, time and money for the applicants as well as the, the board and staff. So we can, we can have a better process and a better, more streamlined review of these types of projects. Cause as we've mentioned, ad nauseam, we're seeing more and more applications in the V M U districts. So, so that's, that's. So, so that's, that's the plan. Um, the EEA application period hasn't opened yet, I will update the board when it does, but we're gonna go in with CMRPC, so I can get a little bit of help. Take a little bit of this grant writing off my plate, possible, um. And I, and you know, I wanna underscore that there be a, an outreach process and community engagement as part of this. So we'll get cons, you know, a consensus from the public and the board and continue to work together in the work, workshop style to make sure that we're addressing what we need to, but also upholding the um, principles of the district, that's why we adopted it in the first place. So we wanna make sure that we're striking that balance. So that is the update on that, and then um, eleven.
Real quick.
Oh, yeah.
Are we thinking the timeline for that is going to extend at least into spring?
I'm not sure yet, I'm not sure, probably.
Okay.
Probably, considering how long it takes them to review and award grants.
Yeah, I would optimistically, given what Fiona has just talked about, it would be somewhat optimistic to have something ready for a year from now.
Yeah.
Depending, if, if we narrow the scope a little bit about, you know, about what we wanna do this, there's a slight possibility we could have something ready for October, but a more comprehensive look at it is likely to take longer. Because basically, to be ready for Fall Town Meeting, you would have to have something done by, before the end of August, which is not very far away.
Yeah, and I'm not going to commit to that.
And I, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't think there's a, there's a need to rush into that. I know we, you know, we've been having a few issues with reconciling the VMU bylaw with other things.
Right.
Including something we put on the table earlier this evening, which sort of factors into that, but yeah, let's take, let's take the time to try to really think things through and and uh, yeah, yeah, my, my intuition is it's gonna take us longer than August.
Oh, yes, absolutely longer than August with the goal of next year, but yeah, it is a process, you know, this is not something that should be taken lightly. It's really, we have to put a lot of thought and time and energy into it, and we wanna make sure we're doing it right, but we're, we wanna kickstart that process, and obviously what happened at town meeting, we wanna start on it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, these overlay districts have come along now and then written by different people at different times. And they are sort of similar, but then, you know, maybe, I've never really been ha- happy to have whole sections of the bylaw for each of those overlay districts.
Yeah.
But anyway, we should, we should reevaluate all that and, and see what we can do.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's see, I'm gonna steal another couple minutes. Eleven thirteen Suzanne Terrace Pocket Park Discussion.
Yeah, so the Town Administrator brought, you know, approached me and said we should try and work on something like this here, and I think it would be a great project. Uh, members of the board might be familiar in our housing production plan. These lots were slated for development when they originally approved, but because of um, the conditions on the site, nothing can be done there. And with the Fourteen Snow Road project coming down the pipe, it might be nice to um, create a pocket park in this area for um, for the neighbors and, and beautify it. I mean, if there's, the, otherwise, they're, they're really, you know, sitting vacant, and we could, we could do something nice. So no, nothing else has happened since, but I just wanted to make the board aware and get your initial feedback before we start thinking about what options we have to, to do this, and you know, if you think it's a good idea, or if you don't, or and I'm, I'm gonna be talking to the Affordable Housing Trust on Thursday about this, because I know that um, they will want to, to have a say as well. Um, because the lots were originally slated for affordable housing development, but obviously, there's not much we can do there now, but I will still be talking to them about it and making sure they get consensus from them.
Yeah, just as a point of information, the, these lots are currently Article ninety-seven land dedicated for the purposes of recreation.
Perfect.
So.
Awesome.
The Pocket Park
Yeah.
Just it aligns with what those, what the original plans were for those lots. Affordable housing, which, you know, we, we had a proposal quite some years ago before the board talking about that.
Yeah.
There was a proposal, and there was a lot of, you know, issues with the con- condition of the land that uh,
Right.
Plus some, you know, neighborhood concerns that, you know,
Sure.
Did not allow a, a housing project to go forward. Had a housing project gone forward, the town would have had to take the, go through the process of removing him from Article ninety-seven.
Hmm, yeah, then that's a tough process.
It's doable, but it's a pain in the neck.
Yeah.
Here, we would be fulfilling the original purpose of that, that land having been, you know, given to the town.
Yeah, so it's, 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 it's exciting, you know, um, you know, we're looking forward to putting our heads together um, to get that done and
Yeah.
Talking to the public and seeing what they wanna see there, and neighbors specifically, um.
My, if you're curious, the original, the, the, that plan, the, the dedication for those for park purposes occurred in nineteen seventy-eight.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. I, my biggest interest would be what, what the neighbors in that area think of having a pocket park there.
Sure.
You know, I, I've seen a lot of commentary, you know, which might be a vocal minority, it might not be of, you know, concerns around traffic with that snow road development. That if the thought that we're having is might be useful for them, then that's additional traffic going into that Suzanne Terrace area that, you know, may not be going otherwise, but, so it's just a thought, I don't know that that's concerning or not. I wanna hear from the residents in the area, myself.
Yeah, the neighborhood sentiment around Suzanne Terrace when we, when it was before the board some years ago was, we wanna see that park developed.
Yep.
Yeah, is this the one, there was, there was a place that supposedly the, the builder dumped concrete and whatnot?
That may have been.
Which made, which made it not viable for.
Yeah, there were, I think that, that probably was one of the reasons why it was determined to be difficult to develop for housing.
Right. Okay, um, anything else on that?
No, that's all.
That's all. Okay. We will move to uh, public hearings and meetings. Request for special permit SP twenty twenty-four dash O three slash SPA and site plan approval for seventeen and twenty-seven Upton Street.
Pursuant to Sections one dot three dot three, one dot five dot seven, twelve and fourteen of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaws, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, commencing at seven thirty PM to consider a special permit application and site plan approval for redevelopment of the former Grafton Highway Department facilities and construction of a four-story multifamily housing development, including thirty affordable units on property located at seventeen twenty-seven Upton Street, Grafton Estates map seventy-four, lots eighty-one and eighty-four. Said property is located in a village mixed-use Grafton Gateway VMU GW and MBTA Communities Overlay, the MBTA zoning district. The applicant is seventeen twenty-seven Upton Street LLC, and the owner is the Town of Grafton. A copy of the application plan is available for public inspection at the Planning Department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website at www.grafton-ma.gov on the Planning Department Development Progress webpage.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll just, I'll do a really brief intro and then I'll turn it over to the team. Um, so I just, I think folks are well aware of this project. It's been in the works for a long time, um, seventeen and twenty-seven Upton Street, the applicant is proposing a hundred and twenty-two units, of which ten percent will be affordable per the bylaw, although the applicant is proposing a higher percentage. Um, my recommendation, considering that we need peer, peer review still, um, the applicant will obviously need time to um, uh, incorporate comments, et cetera, we do what we, um, what we've been doing for like larger scale projects, giving the applicant um, the opportunity to, to speak to the project. Go through some Q and A with the board and the, um, the public, and then go, go from there. I think we should keep, you know, I think that's the most effective use of everybody's time, because obviously more information will be coming um, from our, our um, engineer and whatnot, so. Um, with that, we'll turn it over to the team.
Some of you have arrived after we touched on this back at uh, about seven o'clock. There are, the implementation of this bylaw provision is new, it's new territory, and um, there's um, a lot of questions percolating at the moment as to what exact permitting we will end up
Sure.
Be needing to do, so since those questions are um, gonna take a while to get the best answers, um, I think we'll proceed under the umbrella of the whole, both, both site plan and special permit for now, and we'll work on, work it out as we go along, but uh, as to what we can and can't do about it, we'll have to see. But I think right now, we wanna find out what you're proposing to do.
Okay, great. Well, Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, just brief introduction, Brendan Giblin, Principal of Brendan Properties. We joined the team of John Grant and GSX Ventures as co-developer for the site. So over the last several months since we've been involved, we've spent quite a bit of time with Fiona, um, various boards and stakeholders with the town, kind of refining what our plans were that we have prepared to, to share with you tonight. So along with me tonight is Jean Christie of Ty and Bond, she's gonna run through a lot of the, the, the technical aspects of the site, and, and we're here to answer questions as, as you may have them fit. Thank you for your time.
So hi, everyone, it's nice to see you all again. I'm Jean Christie, Principal Engineer with Ty and Bond. Um, just wanted to remind the board how we got here, um, a cou- few years ago, maybe at this point, uh, John Grant, who's virtual somewhere, um, responded to Town's RFP to redevelop the Grafton Highway Department site into some sort of housing. Over the past couple of years, we've been doing some due diligence work with survey and wetland delineation and things like that to get a better understanding of the project, and then in the past six months, I'd say, we really start to ramp up um, our designs. So I totally understand that the special permit site plan review, how we have to go about this, so um, I'm just gonna present everything and go with the flow. Uh, so Fiona, are you controlling plans?
Yes.
Can you put up sheet C one oh one?
Sure.
And actually, if you wouldn't mind showing folks here, sheet C one oh one. So this is our existing conditions plan, I think everybody's reasonably familiar with the property, uh, seventeen and twenty-seven Upton Street, former um, Highway Department. In general, most of the existing conditions of the site are, I'll, I'll start by saying that site's kind of separated into two areas. We have the right-hand side of the site, which is the eastern side, which is the home of the Highway Department building facilities. And then the left-hand side of the property, um, where there's the existing barn, it's kind of like a, you know, U-shaped, under, upside down, U-shaped, yeah, Lego, style um, uh, property, so. And in between our property, U-shaped, there is a residential home and uh, the United States Post Office building. Um, in the middle of our site, right, right smack dab in the middle, is a significantly large wetland that surrounds the entire um, Highway Department facility. So that's kind of limiting in what we're doing. We're currently before the Conservation Commission um, with our application for that. Uh, the existing facility has a couple of buildings, lots of gravel, lots of pavement, um, all within the resource area, so pretty much every piece of land that was used, is used, and wetlands surrounds the rest. Um, if we want to switch to C two oh one, which is our proposed overall layout plan, we're proposing um, a new four-story residential building, multifamily housing. Um, the footprint's about thirty-three thousand four hundred square feet. We've located it. Yeah, it's, it's an L-shaped building on the right-hand side of the property. Um, it's set as far back as the back leg of the L could be, within um, some of the resource areas from the town for conservation. And then in the front of the building, we have parking area, and we have an auxiliary parking area on the left side of the property, so the far western part of the property. To encourage pedestrian circulation through the site, we do have sidewalks along Upton Street. So we know that Mass DOT is replacing a portion of those, we're proposing to replace the rest along the rest of the site on the eastern part. Um, but more interior to the site, in, in, through some of the amenities to get from the western parking lot to the main building, we're proposing a boardwalk across the wetland, um, that's an elevated boardwalk, um, more of kind of nature-trailing boardwalk, um, as the easier way for pedestrians to move between the two lots. Um, some of the amenities that we're proposing here um, include some recreational courts, community garden space, um, walking trail along the back of the, the residential building, um, all things that will encourage, you know, residents to continue to use the space and to thrive there. Um, our parking areas, I think we're required to have a hundred and seventy-nine parking spaces, we're currently proposing one eighty-eight. But I do wanna note that eight of those spaces are compact spaces, so I don't think they count towards our total count. Um, so we're at one eighty to meet that one seventy-nine. Some of the important things that, to talk about are the, the refuse area is not outside, it is inside the building. So it won't be seen from anyone from the street or from the residents, unless you're inside the building and you go into the room. The parking, if you could zoom out a little bit, Fiona, um, because the parking is kind of in three different areas. There's the primary surface lot that's right in front of the building, um, but inside the building, or I guess underneath, you know, cover on the first floor there, is a covered parking. Uh, that is access from a separate driveway, so we have three proposed curb cuts at this time. Um, the third curb cut servicing that western parking lot. So there's no vehicular connectivity through the parking lots, all three of them, they're all separate. Um, we are going to Mass DOT, Mass DOT with an access permit application, um, in which we will be also be discussing curb cuts, um, some of the other work sidewalks that we're proposing um, for the project. Um, and other amenities inside the building include like a bike storage room, a fitness center area, clubhouse area. Um, is there anything I'm missing that you can remember?
Uh, office space, grill space, gathering space, community.
Yep. And then outside the, kind of the back door, the very north of the, the project, you can see like a large patio area with grills and things like that, so that residence can have easy access to some outdoor door spaces. Um, at this time, we, we've, we've worked with a lighting consultant to, you know, develop a photometric plan. Uh, I just gave that to Fiona, maybe on Friday of last week, so I don't know if we have it available. It's not gonna show a whole lot, I think it's, it's, it's not a great representation, but um, one piece that we are in discussions with the Conservation Commission about is lighting of the boardwalk. So that's a piece that we're still trying to figure out what lighting levels are appropriate in that location, and how to get those incorporated to the rest of the, the drawing. So this is a draft, it will be revised next go-around. Um, we've also have some, some signage on the property, um, directional signage interior to the site to, you know, for the main project name, um, right out front. It's really hard to see on these drawings, but it's at that, that driveway on the left there, uh, there's an, there's a sign. I don't know if you can hug a circle in there, it's a tough one to see. And there's another one at the other, other parking lot, just to say that this is also parking for that facility. And then there's, I think, some more signage at the, um, the covered parking area. Let me zoom in a little bit, there you go.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you can see in the right-hand side of, of this figure that there's, you know, a strange hatching thing um, coming off the driveway there. Uh, that was, that came from some early conversations with the fire department about being sure that we can provide the, the required access to the rear of the building. They did ask if we can get a fire truck closer to around the corner, that would be great. So those are grass pavers, they're, you know, reinforced concrete blocks that allow grass to grow through, so it will look green, but it'll still be strong enough for a fire truck. And Fiona, if you can pan up to the other corner of the building, um, you'll see another one of those to get fire trucks, yeah, it's right there, to get fire trucks to at least get to around that first corner, so they're not trying to pull hoses around further. Before I get into stormwater, Fiona, can, we have um, our traffic engineer on, I think he's in the public access, can you promote him?
Sure.
His name is Matt Stouts.
Okay.
Um, so for stormwater management for the project, uh, we found that groundwater was really shallow, so that was challenging. Actually, we knew it was going to be pretty shallow, I think we expected that. Uh, so what we've. Uh so what we've proposed at this time um is pervious pavers within the parking stalls. So we don't have them within the main drive aisles because those get so much more use than a parking stall. Um and this provides actually a kind of a nice visual to say this is the parking spot. I have some pictures from one that I ran into, a site that I ran into with some really nice pavers uh recently that I can share with the board at another time. But um with that proposal, with with the pervious pavers, a lot of P's. Uh we're able to accommodate stormwater manag-, you know, all the stormwater management requirements on this primary site. If we go over to the other parking lot, and that might be on the next page Fiona.
Yep.
You can see in the bottom left-hand corner, there's an area for a stormwater management basin. This is where we're doing the primary of our stormwater management infiltration because groundwater is shallower here. Um I understand all of this will be reviewed by um the peer review consultant, so we look forward to his comments when um those are received. And I think we can probably talk a little bit more about um the building and actually the architectural things, if if John Fisher is available in the virtual world. And if you could pull up um either elevations or perspectives.
Sure. So John is a panelist, um and I also promoted um and so I'm sorry, the elevations?
Yes, please. So so John, just guide me, um if you want me to switch uh the sheets at all or highlight something.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, can you can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right. Um it is a four-story building and we have a some low, uh I'll say, more solid materials at the base of the building, identifying the base. Uh some, the the style of the building somewhat reflects uh some neighboring buildings uh along Upton um past the fire station on the other side of the street with the end gables and and brick uh uh infill. And uh the two wings will have a a sloped roof with some covering over the balconies, as you can see, that dip down, give it some interest along the eve lines. It's not just just a straight eve line. And then in the back corner where the uh uh roofs meet is shown a a flat roof. Uh was in the previous view, uh you could see it, uh yeah, there where you see the railing. This is from the back side and or side, the right-hand side of the site, where you see the stair tower on the right. And then the railing of that flat area in the back for some rooftop mechanical equipment, all concealed by the sloped roof. We're currently working through building sections for ceiling heights, giving the the units roughly a nine-foot ceiling. There, you can see on the lower left, one of the impediments of the building uh in brick uh and our masonry. Uh and each of the units does have a balcony, as you can see. The main entrance here is on the the right-hand side of this elevation facing the parking. And in from this view, your parking would be in front of you uh or in front of the building. And the entrance is there toward the right end of the building that goes into the public space of the um main. Uh where where a a gathering room is and and offices for leasing, et cetera.
Okay, we probably don't need to go through um the perspectives until we have questions or get to questions. Um so I think next on my list was to talk about traffic. Um I'm gonna have Matt speak to that. If Fiona, if you could get into the traffic study, go to page twenty-six, it's our study area.
Sure.
Figure to kind of give folks an idea of what what we looked at in terms of a study area.
Absolutely.
And take it away, Matt, whenever you're ready.
Yep. Uh so my name is uh Matt Stouts. I'm a traffic engineer from Time Bond. And I'm just gonna give a brief overview of the traffic study that was completed. Uh we do understand that the traffic study is being peer-reviewed and there'll be uh more discussions uh as that gets reviewed and as we get comments. Uh so as you can see on the screen, all the yellow circles are our study area intersections. Uh the the blue highlighted area is a site. Um so our first set of intersections is the three circles in the triangular area around the Grafton Town Common. Um and then as you work your way to the west, uh we looked at the Millbury, Millbury Street and Providence Road intersection. Um and then scrolling up the page uh to the north, uh we studied the Worcester Street and Providence Road intersection. And then we also looked at the three uh proposed site driveways uh on Upton Street. Um so that's the study area, and this was developed based on existing travel patterns and the anticipated uh site traffic patterns. Uh so we we started out by collecting turning movement counts at these study intersections. Uh and that was during the weekday morning, weekday afternoon, and Saturday midday peak hours. And then we also collected volume and speed data over a two-day period right on Upton Street, uh just uh east of the site. Um so the next thing we did was estimated the site traffic generated. And that ended up being sixty-one total trips during the weekday morning peak hour, seventy-three trips during the weekday afternoon peak hour, and uh fifty trips during the Saturday uh midday peak hour. Uh then we distributed those trips to the study intersections. Uh we analyzed the twenty-twenty-four existing condition, uh then the twenty twenty forty-one no-build condition and the twenty forty-one build condition. Uh and what we did was we take a look at the relative impact on the study intersections uh to kind of get a sense of uh the impact our site traffic will have on the surrounding roadway network and the study intersections. Uh so we found that study intersections operate at a similar level of service during the build condition as compared to the no-build condition. Um and then we also conducted a safety assessment. We looked at site distances at the site driveways. And we found that the site uh traffic won't have an adverse impact on on safety or operations uh within that study area. Uh so that's a kind of brief overview, and we'll probably get into more details once the peer review uh comments come back. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Um so I think, I think that's basically it for what we have to present at this point. Um we do have a couple other graphics that that better represent the um existing and proposed conditions of the primary site. Fiona, you can find those color ones.
Sure.
That um it's just really the DPW site or the the Highway Department site. That's uh we show the existing conditions. We show, we're we're using this one with these two graphics with conservation as well to show some of our impacts in their buffer zone. Um but wanted to show you as well because they do give kind of a good representation of what's there today with some of the ground covers and debris. And then um when we get to the proposed one, it shows, you know, what we're, our our goal is for this facility to look like with some of the features and amenity spaces.
Sure. So we'll go to the proposed.
I think there's a representative boardwalk picture up there too, so it's always good to have. Uh so I think at this point, you know, I know that there's, we did request some waivers. Um I know that county, town council is going to be reviewing them. I don't know if it's worth going through any of them right now or waiting. That's fine with us as well. Happy to respond to questions at this point, because I'm sure you have some.
Okay.
Yep, my my recommendation, just let's table any conversation about these waivers until we get more clarity.
Yeah, yeah, no. To find out which ones you might need.
Which ones are actually applicable.
Right.
I'll, I'll just, I'll start with a couple of uh, a couple of things that I thought about. Uh there was mention of accessible, uh uh affordable units. Uh and a mention that was more than ten percent. How many?
Thirty units of the one hundred and twenty-two.
Twenty-five percent.
Hmm?
Twenty-five percent.
It is twenty-five percent, so that counts, that allows all of the units in the whole building to count towards our safe harbor um goal. Uh which uh people who follow this stuff are very interested in.
Correct. Yeah, that 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 was the idea.
Yeah. Um and that's. Yeah, that's good. Um the other one is I'm probably better than a lot of people on visual. Um I'm an engineer, photographer, all that. Um I think the average person looking at this and looking at what we saw and picturing it sitting right next to the common are gonna think this is really on a character with with the area. I suspect that if you had realistic renderings of the and the whole area to give people a view of what they really will see when it's built. You know, and the perspectives are true. Sometimes I see these and, you know, they've been taken with a wide-angle lens. Uh and they're often getting the good part. If we can get, yeah, that, that that doesn't, yeah, oh wow. Um that's.
Even like.
I'm 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 hoping that it's not as bad an impact on the common areas as um people are imagining. You know, for thinking about.
I've never seen it as a board member ever presented to us this way, but it'd be interesting for, given how strong you feel feel about that with the common. Even uh like short computer-generated, you know, image, like like video, I'm saying, it might be useful. We we are kind of progressing some of those visual assets, so we've got these kind of colored renderings for now. We will certainly shoot for the next time that we meet to have some more of maybe a a fly-through or or something that's a little more encompassing of the road.
Drive-throughs that include the common itself, the inn, come piece, you know, library, the fire station, um the post office. In a realistic perspective, um that may help. I hope it helps. I hope that it shows us. Okay, board members. Questions? Go.
The only thing I think that I have at at this stage is just if you can briefly mention your take on if you've, have you read the Historic Commission's letter about the barn?
I, I did see it.
Yeah.
I read it briefly.
Yeah.
It's not all in my head, but.
Yeah, short answer, they want to preserve it. And, you know, can you talk briefly about like the impacts of just with regard to the requirements that you have to meet and everything around that?
And I'm gonna turn that over to Brian E. Angus, who is um our senior consultant at Ty and Bond. More versed in the, any historic, anything. Um so I think she's, was invited as a panelist, so.
Yeah, she should, yeah, she's.
Yep, I'm here, thank you. And but for uh full disclosure, I have not seen a letter from a, from the Historic Commission. But just uh with respect to the barn, um the entire project site is within the uh Grafton Common Historic District, which is listed in the inventory um of historic and archaeological assets of the Commonwealth. It's, the district itself uh is not on the National Register. Uh the barn is also a listed asset. Um and we will be submitting a project notification form to uh the Mass Historic Commission uh for its proposed demolition. Um, you know, as as the board notes uh and knows, this parcel was included as part of the RFP and the barn is owned by the town, and I think um with with no intentions of of uh keeping it. Um but it will be interesting to see that letter. It's also um the role of the Grafton Historic Commission with respect to proposed demolition is is interesting for us um in terms of, um you know, I I don't believe the town has a demolition delay bylaw, et cetera. So we'll, we're certainly, we'll work with them and address their, any questions or comments they have. But um in our, uh based on our review of all the documentation for the Historic District, and there's, there's just very little information about the Gamble Barn itself in uh Mass Historics files. Um it is not uh as historically significant as certainly some other structures in in Grafton. So that's, that's where we are now. Certainly happy to uh read the letter and work with the Historic Commission on this.
Yeah, wonderful, that's.
Is, I I wasn't quite clear whether either or both of these sites are included in the Historic District.
They are, the the district covers both seventeen and twenty-seven.
Huh. I didn't realize it reached out that far.
I didn't think.
Nope.
Nope, that's.
There's two different things. There is the Historic District, which doesn't include this. There's a larger area that's listed in the Mass Historic Commission inventory. It's referred to as.
Oh, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, oh no, that that's two different things.
Yes.
Different things.
Okay.
The Historic District has fairly close uh.
Yeah, the the boundaries of the Historic District are fairly close to the common.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's right along the 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 railroad.
Yeah, and along that same thing, might be to sit back a napkin kind of question. If, if for some reason the barn is not able to be demolished, you know, or you choose not to demolish it, what impacts does that have regards to available units as well as, you know, parking requirements?
Uh I think it's, it's a pretty significant challenge at that point. Um the barn is, you know, the footprint of the barn is being replaced with parking. Um so we have, you know, one parking spot really that we can lose unless we can come up with an agreement with the town to accept those eight compact spaces as um counting.
Yeah.
Um though there there, the area on that western side of the property um does have quite a bit of space that is in upland area. So we're able to use it not, you know, outside of Conservation Commission areas. Um, you know, there would be maybe some reconfiguring of amenity spaces. We may have to lose something over there. Um, you know, that could be our next evaluation. And as to how many units, it would, if, I don't know if it would change anything at this point.
Yeah, I'm not yet convinced that, that I feel we need to preserve the barn personally. I've just seen the letter and I know that people are concerned about it in general and those are wrinkled.
Yep.
We are fans of historic preservation where appropriate, and I'm I'm not sure that location, so we look forward to further discussions.
Yeah, yeah, they um, they make a good case. There's, there used to be a lot of businesses along there. Um and I guess that's the last of it. The, but that area um reminds me, I've s- keep seeing talk back and forth about public parking or the public being able to park in some of this because the common has, has, always has concerns come events and whatnot.
I I think from a compliance with zoning, we're at our parking, this is, this is, the, these one hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces are for our residents. Um I don't know if you want to elaborate on anything.
Yeah, I I think the parking that we've created really would be kind of designated in in specific for the the units and the unit owners for the site.
Because I thought I had seen some people saying that there was some some flexibility in that uh discussed. Okay, well, you're, you're gonna be pretty close to the common and and the inn um and the library, so we'll see how that works out. Okay, other board members.
I don't have anything else at this point.
Okay.
Waiting for more information.
Right. Um that brings us to public input. Anyone who wants to talk to us about this, um raise your hand and I'll.
Come up and uh say your name and address, please.
Oh, well, I was, yeah, the one I saw was way at the back.
I think Bruce's hand is.
Yes, I think uh that's. And he knows how to give his name rank and.
Yeah, it's um Bruce Spinning at seventy-one Potter Hill Road. I just have a quick procedural question, um seeing that there's some discussion on whether this is gonna be special permit process or a site plan review. Um I know there was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this is your last meeting. Um so in the past, and this has been a long time for me, special permits require four votes of the board. You're gonna be down one member. Um so the associate member, at the time when we've had this happen to us before, Bob, we authorized them to be a voting member for that particular special permit for its duration. So if this special permit were to go for the next six months or so, which is. So if this special permit were to go for the next six months or so, which is conceivable, it may happen, and we get a new member on the planning board from a joint, whatever, whatever the process is, um, they would get on the board and be, the associate member would be the voting member of that. Cause I believe you can only miss two meetings.
Right.
No, one.
One.
Well-
Well, you can mull it in one. You missed the second meeting and you can no longer be a participant.
Yeah, no, yeah, if you miss one, you have to do a, um-
Mullen.
Mullen, which is, I wa, you know, I, I swear that I watched it on television or whatever. But, uh, we're covering that base the best we can.
Yeah, that, there's a few things about that. Number one, a, if we appoint the associate member to the full board, just to switch, it could, we, we are meeting on Tuesday next week to appoint someone to the full position. If it's associate member and like Ms. Presley Hand here becomes a full member, it's still all set and still good.
Okay.
If the, the new member, if it's not her, we haven't looked at everything yet, they are not eligible because they were not sworn as a planning board member before this hearing started. Even though it's the only one meeting, from what the clerk's office told me when I first joined the planning board.
But either way, the associate member is gonna be-
Is eligible.
Here for the next six months regardless of whether they-
Yes.
Get appointed. Is there not a, isn't it supposed to be recognized and voted on that the associate member be a voting member of this particular special permit?
That can be done at those decisions.
Whoever's chairing at any point along and really until we take the vote can make that appointment. We'll wait until we see-
I know I might be moot.
What happens for the, uh-
Before it gets too far along into a public hearing process and stuff like that. Cause we would certainly rather have five members voting on this thing for.
Yeah, we're doing everything we can.
Fair enough. That's all.
Okay, good. Now, we started to get somebody else to come down.
Mary Paulinger, thirty-five Carroll Road. I have no problem with this project being built at the old highway department. This will help to beautify Upton Street and as a gateway to Historic Grafton Center. But I do have concerns. The size and scope of this project is much too big. It needs to be scaled down. I am worried that the size of this project as presented could not just back up to the wetlands, but it, it could exceed the wetlands. This has to be very, made very clear that our wetlands need to be protected. My other concern is the heavily traveled Upton Street. With its steady stream of cars, trucks of all sizes, motorcycles, school buses, AM and PM, trains that go across Upton Street. After listening to the presentation and seeing the plans, I think this project at its present size with the added traffic that will be coming in and out of that complex will overwhelm Upton Street and into Grafton Center, which is already a difficult place to navigate after two o'clock in the afternoon. It's a good project, but it should be scaled down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Anybody?
Joanne Paget, owner of Four North Street and also Forty North Street. Uh, just have a few concerns. That whole street is extremely wet. Everybody's basement is constantly flooded. And you pointed out, I think in the picture, that I think some kind of storm water or water management is going to go down in this section.
You have to be at the mic so that-
Sorry.
Everybody-
Down in that section, right? My, my, my property line is right on the property line of the barn. So if that's where you're demolishing, I know some parking is going there. I'm just wondering, is there going to be any, I, I, I tried to read, it was very well done. But I, I didn't, wasn't able to like blow it up enough to see what kind of maybe fencing or shrubs you are trying to put there. I did see all of that effort. So I'm, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just, I think at this point, I, I don't know if it's too soon, but I'd love you to see you float a balloon so that we can sit on the common and see if we will see it. And then also, if you could, for the homeowners on North Street that, that are but you, if you could maybe put some, um, plastic flags to show where, where you are gonna come to. Cause most of us honestly, um, when you buy these houses, they're so old, nobody really surveys them properly. We don't even know. You could be in our living room for all we know. And right, you know, with, 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 with all rights, we just, we would love to know where is it actually going to come?
I can share my information with you and we can meet, you know, outside.
Sure.
You know, show you some more of the detailed plans and answer any other questions.
But I, I, I was very impressed by how thorough. Um, I don't know of any other project that I've been aware of that has even bothered to try to put any amenities. So I think that's very important. I think that the various boards should be holding all developers to put a few things in there so that they don't overtax, they already overtax town amenities. So thank you for thinking of doing something like that.
I'll see you after the meeting.
Who else? Come on.
Hello, Morgan King, fifty-nine Wesson, and owner of Off the Common Antiques, right off the common. I think this project is, is wonderful in that it is gonna beautify that section of town that's been kind of sitting derelict for a number of years. I'm, I'm not sure, um, I think your scope has changed a bit and you were originally going to put in some mixed-use restaurants, some retail? And now is it just gonna be apartments only? Or is, are there any mixed-use?
It is just, uh, multifamily housing at this time. We never came to the board with a mixed-use, um, project.
Okay, I thought the RFP originally-
It may have been in the RFP.
Okay, yes. That's what I recall years ago. And that, that was really exciting to have additional businesses at the common. So if there's any opportunity, um, to do that instead of any office space, uh, that would be great. My other, um, I guess, request, I am also in favor of trying to retain that beautiful barn. Um, I know a lot of folks in town have, we've had the recent discussion about the old fire station on Worcester Street and keeping that intact. And it's, I think it's a hideous building, but it's serving a purpose, um, for the school department. But to bulldoze the beautiful barn that is a, you know, country aspect of our town, I think if there's some way to retain that, um, and I've been brainstorming all these ideas of how, you know, our business could utilize that for antiques somehow, events, community events, something with, um, grant money. But your parking issue might be tricky, cause if that's only your parking. But if there's some way to sit and collaborate, talk to the town, to do some public-private partnership. I mean, we're, we're definitely interested in exploring that before you knock it down, so. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Someone more that wants to speak? Well, hard to tell what's going on here.
At least two.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ross Sharrow. I own the two-family home at twenty-five Upton Street, right at the heart of your- The issue I would like to raise this evening is in regards to the pickleball court that is planned to be constructed directly behind my home, approximately forty feet from my door. Pickleball court near people's home causes a great deal of noise, even with the windows closed. I suggest a playground for the children, much like on North Street, would be a more neighborly decision. In my opinion, if the pickleball court is approved, it will make my yard unusable for recreational purposes for myself and my tenants. In addition, one of my tenants works from home and is on team meetings all day long. The noise resulting from the pickleball court would be very distracting and disturbing to her job. If the pickleball court is approved, I would like to request the black vinyl coated chain link fence be replaced with a twelve-foot-high wall, sound-absorbing panels like on a highway. They've done it at other pickleball courts. The high wall would prevent the balls from coming into my yard as well as keeping the noise level down and people getting hurt jumping the fence to retrieve their balls. In addition, I would like to request that no lights from the court face in the direction of the back of my house. Moving on to the topic of the apartment complex, I will need a fence along the whole property line in the back. This isn't just a neighbor, it's a whole group. And unfortunately, that's a wildlife trail that comes down the back of Peterson's property, right through my yard and straight across the street. So you will be cutting off a wildlife trail. That I have a fisher cat that visits me a few times a year. He will be visiting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Suzanne Paulinger, forty-seven Upton Street, Grafton. Uh, I am also for the project. I think the area needs to be redeveloped and hopefully beautified. But I do have some concerns like the other people. Uh, first of all, as far as a pickleball, uh, court, I just heard recently they're putting them inside because of the noise. So there is an issue. It was recently on-
Are you saying other people are, or are you saying?
Well, no, they did, it was on the news recently, the, the, the noise from, from an outside court. But they are putting them inside now, but anyhow.
Other people are.
Other people.
Not these people.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to mention about the, the noise that it has been, it has been notified. But I have some issues. As far as the wetland, I don't know how much you're going into the wetland. As far as you're, you're using all the existing property now, correct? How much you going into the wetlands?
We aren't going into the wetland at all, except for the boardwalk that's going over the-
Over the wetland.
Right. We don't, the, the town has a twenty-five-foot no disturb zone, an offset from the wetland that we're trying really hard to stay out of and keep that natural buffer. Uh, but there are areas where we are encroaching.
Well, you said just trying to keep out of it. Does that mean you're building up towards it?
We're building up, the building goes up to the twenty-five-foot no disturb zone.
Is that what they, what they had on the property already?
The, the building is actually inside of some of the current pavement. Correct? Like right now, what, what's on site?
Yes. Right, yes. The limits of pavement-
Than what's there currently.
Okay, so you're further from the wetlands than the highway department was.
Right, they had, there's a lot of gravel out in the back.
I understand. You're cleaning, okay. Also water issues on that street. Anyone who's noticed the highway department sees how the water accumulates outside the, um, the building, especially even after a moderate rainfall, and it stays there for days. And then many times with a heavy rainfall, it goes into the roadway. So I'm concerned with that. So obviously how important our wetlands are to absorb that water. So I'm really, um, happy that you're not going further into it. Also too, um, this is a unique project more than any other project in town because it's so close to the common and near the New England's most beautiful commons. And that's just not my opinion, that's fact. So it's important that it doesn't overwhelm the area but blend and enhance it. And I think right now, it does need to be curtailed back. How much, I don't know. But it seems to me that a pickleball court, office space, there may be some things that can be compromised along that line. Also too, as far as the water issues, if you talk to the water department, they've dug that road up several times, uh, addressing pipe issues. So now with the added stress of a hundred and twenty-two families, I'm worried about the stress on the utilities as far as that goes. So I think, again, because it's unique in where it is, you gotta get it right. Because of its location. And it has to be done responsibly. And like I said, I, I think most people wanna see it redeveloped, but as long as it's done to enhance the area, and I've worked with the board, Mr. Hesseger, I've worked with you in the past. I know you, people are measured. I know you're fair. I know you have common sense. And, um, I'm sure you will, going forward, you'll see that the project is done responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've noticed, uh, several people have mentioned the wetlands. Don't forget to go to the Conservation Commission hearings. They're the ones that know about wetlands. And, uh, I think they're pretty careful about it.
Yes.
This board usually defers most of the, you know, wetland-type concerns to the Conservation Commission's expertise. And I will note that it looks like you've met with the Conservation, Conservation Commission already on the seventh of May.
Correct.
And your next meeting from, on their website is the twenty-eighth of May for you, for you to reappear.
Good evening, John Stevens, I'm a member of the Historic District Commission. This is a project that will improve the site. Uh, we support the project. Our concern is with, uh, the barn. We need the housing, we need the affordable housing. We wanna work with you. We want it to be a win-win-win. We want it to be a win for you. We want a win for the town. And we want it to be a win for maybe a nonprofit that if you would either give the land back to the town that had just the barn, and then the town could work with like Apple Tree Arts, where a dollar lease for thirty years or however, and then they're responsible for restoring the building. That would then create additional space for businesses. Because that project, I think, when the, the RFP went out, everybody had certain things in mind that would happen at that site. And that was gonna be street-level, um, retail, and that's something that we really want to increase activity on the common and near the common, and everybody will benefit because you'll go to your shop and then go to the library and then go to the Apple Tree Arts for performance. If we could utilize that building in a way, I have actually had conversations with a nonprofit that would love that building, but until that building is not owned by a for-profit and it, I can't seek any grant funding for a structures, uh, historic structures report or feasibility study that the town has to own it or a nonprofit. But we would love to work with you because as a tax write-off, I would think that that would be a, a positive for the town. We get to save the building. Um, I think Mr. Hesseger said this was a concern, this four-story building. That's one of the nice things about the barn. It's big and it's tall and it's gonna block sightlines. You could put parking all around it and just save that, the footprint of the building for, uh, the barn, um, to be used for other purposes that could benefit the town. Uh, at our meeting last, we had a Historic District meeting on Thursday, somebody said some of them are even recreation because it's big inside. I mean, there's something for the kids. The kids are going to the library where they really shouldn't be doing certain things. They could do things in this building. But there's so many opportunities that this building could be used that would benefit the town. We get to save a historic building that you don't see barns this near to the center of town anywhere anymore. They're gone. And the fact that it was this close to the center tells you that's the history of our town. This was an agricultural community. So we wanna work with you. We wanna get that housing. We, I'm on a committee that's funding affordable housing. So I am very much in favor of this. I just want it to where everybody wins. And that we don't lose yet another building for a parking lot or a detention pond. Cause that's where the detention pond looks like it's gonna be. And that's just, I don't want a historical marker that says, "On this site once stood", and you're looking at a detention pond. That's, so, we wanna work with you and we will do whatever we can to, to make it work for everybody.
What do we know about the structural condition of the barn?
Just in talking to the highway department. Just in talking to the highway department, that the, the building is, is structurally sound, but without a historic structures report, does somebody go in and actually do an analysis? You know, I'm not an engineer at all, so, you know, but it's, it's a, a sturdy building that does not have any evidence of any kind of deterioration to where things are sagging or it looks like you can see rotten, rotten beams, um, that-
Yeah.
And that would also determine what you use. And again, if nothing else, to buy time, if this is the last thing, that's the other thing I've said along, wait to knock that down at the very last thing. You know, I know you've got to plan things and work things scheduling-wise, but to give us opportunities to find out, you know, is this building something that you, maybe it can't be saved, you know? But if it can be, what can we do to see, uh, to try to save it? And to make it, uh, give it a new life, the, it'd be an important part of, of the community in the next hundred years, because it's already 100 years old, almost 100 years old. How far, let me, I have a couple of questions. How far is the actual, this site where the barn is to the, uh, where the apartments or condos, I'm not sure which one they are, are going to be located? How long is that walk, the, uh, boardwalk going to be?
Let's see. The boardwalk itself is probably about 100 feet long.
Okay.
And that's just to span the wetlands and there's sidewalks up to it on the other side. Um, but from the boardwalk, where the boardwalk ends to the actual parking lot, it's probably about 150 feet.
And how many spaces are in that auxiliary?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. So that's, again, that's something that the planning board, I don't, again, I heard you talk about waivers, I don't know what other things that you can do that you say if this, then that, you know, that if you do this will, you know, I don't know what the rules are on that, but that would be something to, uh, again-
Once we find out about how the permitting is actually going to work-
Then you'll have better answers.
Then we can talk about that.
Right, I mean, it's like any, any which way we can make something work for everybody, I think that would, that would make everybody, uh, better off in the long run.
Yep. My, my brief gut feeling too is that we probably will not be able to waive the entire auxiliary parking lot and-
Well, I'm not saying that at all.
I know you're not saying that, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud that we probably would not be able to waive the entire auxiliary parking lot and keep the same unit count because that's going to exacerbate parking problems all around the area.
But the footprint of the building compared to the site itself and the green spe, where the little house used to be, it's quite large. And again, getting back to what Robert, it's, uh, Mr. Hesseger, this is going to block and I don't want to see more parking, it's like it can be blocked by this building and that's, it's going to serve a, a, yet another function that's an asset for the town. And kind of to keep our little cocoon of the common to where it still looks old and, and quaint, even though you have all this modern right next door.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone else? There'll be additional chances because we're going to have another hearing, maybe two.
Sure will.
Maybe, who knows? Um, it's a big project.
Guaranteed at least one more hearing.
Well, I'm, I'm sure of that because we don't have our peer reviews yet. Um, oh, the, um, it just occurred to me, I'm not sure whether it would make any difference to the traffic study, but consider that we do have the railroad with the gates and they come through any time it pleases them and closes the gates for as long as they like. Um, and I don't, you know, that's at a fairly critical point in the traffic flow, so, uh, maybe even backing up, coming, going towards your site. Um, so, uh, that ought to be in the traffic study, um, to whatever, to whatever degree.
And I think at the very least, the peer review consultant will flag that, they know the town very well, so, um, we will have that discussion with them.
So are we, am I missing anyone who wants to speak? No. Okay, um, you will perhaps want to request a continuation of the, the hearing until-
Not the 10th, um, the next is-
The next opportunity would likely be the 24th of June.
The 24th, yes. And then what's, do you have the schedule up in front of you?
Let's see.
I'm sharing my screen, so I don't want to-
We'll request it now, but I think we have to file it up with our-
The 24th should be, um-
Yeah, we should have a planning board. According to my calendar on my computer, it's, we have a meeting on the 24th.
Twenty-fourth and July 8th.
July 8th, okay.
July 8th, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, our, um, we have a full agenda on the 10th, that would be our next one normally, but it seems like- It seems like we, we, I mean, we have plenty to do with peer review comments, um, you know, we'll meet with each of them, um, address comments and then get revised drawings, revised reports, get everything back and even start that second review piece of it, um, by the 24th, so.
Yeah, June 24th.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's five weeks.
Yeah.
It should be plenty, if I had to turn around the peer review and, and then some-
We'll hope to check a lot of boxes.
So I'll move the board, grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing until June 24th, 2024 at 7:30 PM.
Second. Granting.
That's what I said this time.
He did. I thought I heard approve. Uh, anyway, okay.
Yeah, he said grant.
Uh, discussion on the motion, carry none.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Van Keterman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hesseger?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We will all see you on, uh, the 24th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And I can just take that hard coffee or-
A minute or two just to use the restroom real quick?
Oh, okay, yeah, and Tom's good. Hello? Can't seem to hear you.
We're taking a short break.
I'll give people a chance to file an email.
Fiona, did you get an email from us with the blasting?
I didn't, no. Let me look.
An hour ago.
Did you send it, Matt?
Yes. I just, I see it.
Matt Shaughnessy?
Yeah.
Matt Shaughnessy?
Yeah, I, I see it now, yep. I didn't get a chance to upload it to the record. If I can share it.
Go ahead.
No problem.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yep.
All right, we'll go on to, um, the continued hearing on, uh, Five Millennium Drive, Claremont Grafton LLC, PA 2024-01. What, where are we?
Sure, yeah, so to, to, you know, we're obviously, um, still need to talk through some of the, uh, information that we received fairly recently. Um, we got, uh, grave engineering's peer review reports and we'll want to talk about that, um, to some extent, um, as well as, um, the traffic information from Bowman, but that was very recently, so, um, I don't think the applicant even has had time to digest that. Um, however, I think the, uh, focus of this meeting, um, primarily will be on the blasting and hearing from the, um, blasting consultants, uh, and how that, that process will unfold, um, throughout the course of, uh, construction. Other than that, there is, there is a couple of other things that we can touch on, but, um, I think that is certainly enough content for, um, for this evening and will cover all the major areas of concern that we've been hearing from the public and from the last meeting, so, um, with that, we'll turn it over to, to Mark and his team to go through the logistics. And I have the presentation up here, if we're starting with the blasting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mark Bobrowski, my office is in Concord, Massachusetts. I represent Claremont. And with me is Bill Lovett, who's going to take the mic momentarily. Fiona's right, we did get the Graves' peer review and the Bowman peer review, we're prepared to talk a little bit about the Graves' peer review. We have a, a gentleman here from Allen &amp; Major to cover that ground after the blasting presentation. Bill will fill you in on, um, that as we get there. I'd like to, are we ready to do the blasting presentation?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Uh, two gentlemen are here from Maine Drilling and Blasting, uh, Matt and, Matt Shaughnessy and Tyler Peer, and they're going to walk you through it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, appreciate your time, thanks for having us. So my name is Matt Shaughnessy, I'm the divisional manager.
And these-
Good evening, I'm Tyler Peer, main drilling and blasting.
So I'm Matt Shaughnessy, the divisional manager for Maine Drilling and Blasting. Um, Tyler Peer is the divisional superintendent for Maine Drilling and Blasting. Our office is in Milford, Massachusetts, uh, not too far down the street on 140. So, one thing I'd like to start off with saying is even though our company is Maine Drilling and Blasting, that's where the company originated in 1966, and now we have regional offices up and down the eastern seaboard. Um, right now, uh, our Milford office, um, is comprised of about 45 different folks that all are from local, we're not from Maine anymore. Um, that was back in the 90s and whatnot, so it's all local folks working local projects around here. The intention tonight is just to give a brief overview of the drilling and blasting process. It is somewhat of a, um, a niche, um, type of project, so, and, um, I don't think it gets a lot of exposure, so I just wanted to give everybody a high-level, um, view of the process and what we do. So we'll start out with a project overview, we'll speak to some comparable projects that we've done, um, locally and around, uh, the region. We'll talk about blasting safety and pre-blast planning, also measuring ground and air response, human perception, and what research has revealed in regards to those subjects. Um, this is our map that our engineering department has developed, um, for this project on Five Millennium Drive. Um, what you can see there in the middle is, um, anything that is shaded red in the middle of the plan set there is where we anticipate blasting to be required to remove the ledge on this project. So the brief overview of the blasting process prior to mobilization, so Maine Drilling and Blasting first will review all the project documents and geotechnical information. Um, we have an in-house engineering department that will mull over all this, um, you know, project-specific data, and that's how we're going to generate our bid, um, for the project and also create our blast designs and understand how we want to approach this project and do it in the safest way possible. That includes, um, the next step in the process would be the pre-blast survey. So the pre-blast survey, and we'll speak to this a little bit later on, but just a brief overview is that the Massachusetts State Fire Marshal's Office requires, the code requires that any project, any, um, occupied structure within 250 feet of the perimeter of the blasting is offered a pre-blast condition survey. Um, once those are completed, we would then go to the Grafton Fire Department and apply for the blasting permit at that point.
Fiona, could you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Just to show that red, the red line shown is the, uh, 250-foot, um, pre-blast survey.
Red, oh, I see, okay. So that includes, uh-
Includes primary colors.
Primary colors.
Yes.
Because I, I know they're concerned.
Correct, yep. And just to, um, speak to a typical day, we would, um, typically plan to do one to two blasts per day, Monday through Friday, um, nothing on the weekends, and we will aim for blasts to occur at a consistent, regular time daily between 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM. So comparable projects, this was a project that was completed, um, down in Boston, uh, adjacent to Mass General Hospital. We had to take out, um, ledge that was approximately 30 feet deep and 80 feet away from the Mass General Surgery Wing, uh, along with street utilities. And, um, this was kind of an interesting project, so obviously surgeries need to continue as this project is going on, and, um, the blaster that was doing this referred to it as the NASA countdown, and it was, okay, 10, 9, 8, down to 1, scalpels up, blast, okay, back to work. I mean, that's how quick the process is, once the site is secured, blast, deemed safe to blast, we can really scale it down to that, um, very short window so that we don't interrupt other activities that are around the blast site. Okay, this next one was, um, a project down at West Point. Uh, there was 90 feet of ledge that had to be removed 50 feet away from a historical church at West Point in, um, New York, and that historical church was actually starting to fail and slide off of the slope on its own before the project started, but, uh, we went in with a, with a solid plan and utilized our technical services group that is also, um, in-house with Maine Drilling and Blasting, and we were able to get through that project and, and not cause any additional damage to that structure. This one is a little more recent, um, this project was in Brookline, Massachusetts. We blasted for approximately 90,000 yards of ledge, uh, some of which was 35 feet away from apartment units in Brookline, Mass. This project, as I'm sure people know, it's a very densely populated area, so with this project in particular, we had over 250 pre-blast surveys offered, and, um, Tyler can speak to this project, he was actually the one running this job, and as you can see, that picture there, um, those black squares in the middle of the picture is actually, this is mid-blast, so the blast is initiated, it's starting to break the rock, and those buildings, those brick buildings next door, um, there are residents in those homes, living there while this project went on, and, um, the project went really well for us, and kudos to Tyler for running that one safely. So blasting safety, um, pre-blast planning, hazard assessment. Our most important responsibility in working on any job site is to identify potential hazards before the project starts, so that just speaks to what I'd mentioned earlier about reviewing the documents, understanding what's around us, and I will speak to that a little bit more, and these are a couple other pictures. Um, the one on the left is actually, um, a project down in Hopkinton at the old EMC building. We blasted underneath that building because they wanted to add office spaces where the, um, parking garage was existed, so they, there was ledge underneath the parking garage, so we had to blast it down to make, um, room for more office space, and we were able to complete that project and not interrupt the inner workings of the, uh, building upstairs, and the office kind of went on as it normally did. Project on the right there was up at the State House in Maine. Um, again, we had to blast inside of that State House underneath it to make room for improvements for that project as well. Um, it's just another slide again, kind of representing some of the work that we do, um, in residential areas, very close proximity to people's homes, and it all goes back to doing your homework, understanding what's around you, um, using the blast designs effectively so that we can perform our job in a safe manner. And this speaks again just to the pre-blast planning, so this document is generated by our engineering department, as Tyler had mentioned earlier, that red ring around the inner red is that 250-foot pre-blast survey radius, which in, encapsul- which encapsulates some primary colors. So the pre-blast condition survey. Vibration can be perceived at levels as low as 1/100 of the safe level for a residential structure. The State Fire Marshal's Office, it is in the code that regulates blasting in this state, allows for a 2.0 peak particle velocity. What that basically is, is how much the ground particles move once a blast is initiated. There is some excitement in the ground that the particles move and then return back to their original rest state after a period of time. So when vibration from a new blasting operation is initially felt, the natural response of a homeowner will often be a focused inspection of their home that will reveal pre-existing but unnoticed cracks generated by natural or environmental forces. So it's a natural reaction. Your home shakes, a large truck goes by, if there's blasting occurring nearby. This is why we really think the pre-blast surveys are so important. We want people to get the pre-blast surveys. We want them to have this backup so that if there is some, for some reason, some damage is caused, they have something to refer back to. And a lot of times it'll actually help people realize, oh, you know, I do have a crack in my drywall or foundation. I think most of us who live in New England do, just with the environmental factors that are constantly imposing upon our houses. So the pre-blast, the pre-existing defects will not be attributed to the project if they are pre-identified in the survey. The inspection also identifies surrounding activity, operations, or processes that the proposed work may need coordination with. So such as primary colors, we are, that survey will vet out that process. You know, we have talked briefly tonight with the owner of Primary Colors and we are very much aware of what he has going on there. We want to make sure that we are able to work in tandem with them, not to interrupt or affect him in any negative way. Pre-blast planning, so this, this is a section actually from the State Fire Marshal's Office. If you went onto their website, this little blurb is on there to kind of point people in the right direction. So if a property owner thinks that the damage occurred as a result of blasting, they should file a regulatory review form with the fire department within 30 days of blasting. So that goes to the local Grafton Fire Department. It's called FP 296. And it's a form that the resident would fill out and say that, you know, I think they cracked my window, something of that nature. At that point, what that does is it triggers a regulatory review. So all our blast data is collected on a daily basis in a blast report. It's going to be reported to the Grafton Fire Department. We've done blasting in town in the years, in years past. And they have that data that has the instrument. The seismograph is what's measuring the vibration and the air overpressure. And they're going to look at the blast on that day compared to the damage complaint and look at our data to make sure that we were within the allowed vibration criteria and air overpressure readings. Pre-blast surveys will be offered to all occupied structures not under the control of ownership of the project. All the abutters and others, if desired, can be notified via text, email, or phone call notification prior to the blast. If anybody would like to be added to this notification, we have our administrator's name on here with the office, the local office in Milford. It's a very simple way to kind of, a lot of, a lot of people that we find that are getting upset or perturbed by the blasting, it's a startle factor, they don't anticipate that. So if we can get ahead of that type of thing and get folks on a notification list, that a lot of times will just kind of make things go a lot smoother for everybody. And I get it, you're at home working or doing whatever and you get a sudden jolt. It's, it's natural for people to hear that. So with that being said, on the blast site, there is a state-mandated whistle signal sequence. So that is meant to notify anybody within 250 feet. It's for the site workers. It's not for the residents. We get this a lot where people think, hey, I didn't hear the horn. It's, it's for the safety of the workers on the job. It's not so much for the residents or the abutters around the project. That's why we, as a company, as a courtesy, we want to offer that notification. And anybody can be notified if there's anybody on the plan, you know, on the board here or in, in town in general, they can be notified as well. But the whistle sequence is at five minutes until the blast, there are three long audible horn signals. And then at one minute to the blast, there are two short audible horn signals. Once the blaster deems that it's safe, the blast will be initiated. After the blaster has verified that it's all clear, safe to go back to work, there's one long horn. That means all clear. So sticking with pre-blast planning, the mathematical blast design. So number one, we have to figure out where the blast location is. And, and what is the relationship between the blast location as compared to surrounding structures that may be affected by the blast? So we're going to look at the distance of the structures. We're going to read the, the reports on the geology in the area. Again, we can use our experience in these cases because we have worked around this area quite often. But we also rely on some of the USGS maps and the project data that's submitted pre-bid. And once we have those things accounted for, we're going to start running our blast designs and do vibration estimate calculations. I will say, when we do our vibration estimate calculations, we're going to have a very over-conservative blast design. We call this a test blast. The first blast on the job is always a test blast. Anytime we move to a different area, we consider that a test blast. And we're going to use that same standard over-conservative blast design to make sure that we're not going to cause any damage or have a fly rock or things of that nature. This is an example of a pre-blast analysis. The pre-blast design analysis is used to scale the blast geometry and charge based on proximity to the structure and safe vibration limits. So what that does, if you could, you know, dig into it, we don't really need to here. I don't think we have to get into the weeds that much. But basically, it shows you the amount of explosives you're going to be using in that scenario and how it relates to the closest structure. And then it'll give us our predicted vibration calculations based on those two things. After the blast plan is finished, is finalized, a pattern of holes is drilled into the ledge. Explosive charges are loaded into the drilled holes. The final step in preparing the blast involves the setting of mats to prevent debris from leaving the immediate blast area. So on this particular project, all of our blasts will be matted. We don't have the opportunity too much in Massachusetts to not use blasting mats just because it's very densely populated. These mats actually are made out of recycled tires. They're made up in Canada. And the ones in the picture and the ones we would use on this project, they're 12 feet wide by 24 feet long. They weigh anywhere from 11,000 to 13,000 pounds apiece. And they're woven together with steel cable wires. So it's essentially a large blanket, a very heavy large blanket. But at the same time, it's very malleable, so it'll conform to the ground that's underneath it. And what that does, it acts as a blanket and a net. So when the blast is initiated, it kind of contains all the rock and prevents it from flying around and damaging anything. So throughout the entire project, safety is the first and foremost priority. Each blast is closely coordinated with local officials and job site management personnel. People, equipment, and traffic on adjacent roadways are monitored and controlled at the time of the blast, if necessary, to ensure the absolute safety of all. So this is speaking to our site security plan. So on every project, the blaster is going to determine safe zones for the site workers and anybody in that area to be when the blast is initiated. This is a very important part of our job and we take it very seriously. Our folks are trained in this application so that they understand. We use two-way radios so that we have constant communication throughout this process. And what we'll do is set up a perimeter. If you could flip to the next one, please, Fiona. Thank you. So this is kind of hard to see again. It's, it's a large site. But those blue dots around the perimeter is an example of where we would set up our sentries that are trained for site security purposes. We were going to have the blaster in an area where he has, he or she has a clear view of the entire blast site so that he, they can make sure that it is safe to blast when the time comes. And the way that is done is, like I said, via two-way radio communication. And again, this example, it's encompassing the whole site. Most times, we're going to scale that down to fit to each individual area that we're working. Because a job like this, it's definitely more than one blast. It's a fairly amount, a large amount of ledge.
And the, the Grafton Fire Department will also be there daily as required. A detail will be there throughout the process, observing the blasts. And then we submit documentation almost instantaneously at the end of the day to them.
Yeah, so they're, they're there for a couple of different reasons, to make sure that we're doing our job safely, number one. But number two, they're going to review our blast data. Most of the time, they'll check our readings right after the blast to make sure we're within compliance so that we're not allowed to continue doing our job if we're not within compliance. So this is a video of the job we spoke about in Brookline. Hopeful that it will play.
Yeah, I don't think I can play it. Let me see if I can get it. Sorry. No, sorry.
Okay, if you click on the picture, it doesn't work?
No.
Okay.
I might be able to get it on my laptop if.
You want to try sharing it? Can you play it?
I'm, I might be able to. I don't know where the link is for it.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Let me see if I can.
Can try.
Sorry, spare with me for a sec.
While we're doing this, since you made this presentation, we, our record should have a copy of it.
Okay.
I'll upload it to the record. Yeah, I got it a little while ago, so I'll make sure to include it.
Yeah, because it's not on our page yet. At least I can see it. I mean, there are two items on there from today.
Yeah.
Let's see if I can get it to work.
So how are we doing?
I'll be taking a few seconds. Nope, it won't run on me. Not right away.
Okay.
Okay.
It was worth a shot.
Basically, the mats go up and then down.
It's to explain that, you know, blasting is very controlled nowadays. Where we blast is all relative to the area and the structures around it.
Okay. You have any more? Or just?
I think there's a few more slides. I'll, I'll try to get through them as quickly as I can. Yeah, I understand. So basically, just to get back, you know what, you can, you can skip this. I don't think we need to get into this type of detail on this one anyways.
Yeah, again, this will be uploaded, so.
Yep. You can keep skipping. This is just an example of a seismograph. So just to speak again to the limits that we have to apply to and adhere to. So unlike the safe limit for ground response, the US Bureau of Mines Research recommended a 133 decibel air response limit based on an annoyance level. So damage won't occur at a 133. Again, it's overly conservative because they want to make sure we're not annoying folks as much. Damage occurs at a higher level. If you click, I think it'll show up here.
133 dB right at the blast? You know, 90 dB is not good for my ears.
Correct. But 133 decibels is equivalent to a 27 to 28 mile per hour wind. And actual safe limit is more like 140, a 40 mile an hour wind. That's when, if you get above 140 decibels, you could crack a window.
Okay.
So again, safe limit for ground response is two inches per second. That's that 2.0 peak particle velocity. Damage does not occur at a 2.0 inches per second. Most homes can tolerate a level of a five inches per second or more at higher frequency. And this is just a document that speaks to some of the natural and human introduced, induced forces on structures that can cause, I'm drawing a blank here, sorry. That can cause vibration to affect your home more so than the blasting limit. So temperature change can exert forces greater than three inches per second on a home. Humidity change can exert forces greater than two inches per second on a home. And wind can exert forces greater than six inches per home. So again, just trying to illustrate the fact that the 2.0 state regulation is very conservative. Any questions?
Yeah, well, I have a couple. You spoke in terms of yards of material moved. I know you haven't fully designed this and all, but you probably have an idea of the overall yardage involved here, whether it's rock or not rock. But trying to get a sense of scale compared to, say, some of your other examples. How, how much is out there that needs to be removed?
So I haven't seen the latest design for this, but I would say roughly speaking, there's somewhere around about 70,000 yards.
Okay.
Of rock. I can't speak to anything outside, and that's based off of the.
Okay, well, that, that puts it in the context of some of the other things you said. Any idea of how many blasts this will involve, which comes out the days or weeks?
I would say rough duration, anywhere from two to three months of blasting.
So a pretty considerable number of blasts. Okay.
Unfortunately, we can't do it all at once.
One big blast.
We get that a lot, actually.
Okay, those are the things I had.
So I have a few thoughts. First, first and maybe simplest is your safe zone, blue dots. And the screen showed going into a decent amount of the MBTA train parking.
Yep.
How does that work in terms of establishing that safe thing with the MBTA? Do you need, do you need to coordinate with them in particular to?
We're not within the MBTA zone of influence. What we're going to do is have our folks in the parking lot to make sure there aren't people hanging out in their cars or just in the parking lot that are in an area that we wouldn't deem safe. So we're going to make sure that we're, we have people down there. And if there's somebody that's not going to move, then we're not going to blast because we're not going to blast until it's safe.
I also am aware that it's pretty easy just to drive in and get around pretty, you know, fast in that parking lot from the street, too. That's, that's the other thing in my mind with that safe zone.
And what we'll do is we'll have, we'll have radio communications. And, you know, if we, if we see a car coming in, you know, I'll say I'm in the parking lot. I have direct communication with the blaster. And I'll be telling the blaster to hold off.
Okay.
Until, until the car, I'll be telling the blaster to hold off until the car, you know, parks, walks over to the MB, the railroad and continues through, things like that. Well, we're not going to, you know, move cars, anything like that, which is to keep people safe.
Okay. Do you have any?
Looks like you had something.
I have a question. Go, please finish.
Oh, sure. Do you have any indication on the distance that people would feel the vibration from your blasting? I know the 250 feet is your pre-survey, but like, how far are we looking at roughly?
Probably anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000 feet. It's, it's hard to say because it can travel in different areas for different reasons. You know, the, the water content in the soil, things of that nature. There's so many different factors that I just can't speak to, but people surrounding the project will feel it.
And similar question to sound travel?
Yep. And, and again, that kind of depends, direction of the blast, where the people are located. Foliage, believe it or not, can affect the, how the sound travels. So a lot of different factors. Typically, it's described as a distant rolling thunder, you know, because most of the folks on this one are at least residential anyways, are probably 1,000 feet plus based upon the things that I was looking at. I think the Pulte homes might be closest at like 2,000 feet, so.
And that's where we would, you know, recommend people get on the notification list, even if they're, you know, 1,000 feet away, so that they, they are aware. It doesn't inundate the departments as much.
That does bring to mind another thought, too, is you said typically, I mean, Monday to Fridays, basically you work. That does bring to mind another thought, too, is you said typically, I mean, Monday to Fridays, basically, you work, working day, you know, business day, kind of blasting. But we see your nearby neighbors, none of which are residential. I don't remember Primary Colors' hours of operation, but is there anything in state law or regulations that would say it might make more sense for this project to be doing the blasting at night and/or on the weekends to avoid the typical, you know, congestion of the MBTA and congestion of Primary Colors' operation?
Yeah, I understand, and, and that would be a good idea, other than, um, just from a safety standpoint, we can't blast when it's dark.
Okay.
If, and, um, al- also, most towns, it's most regular, um, local fire departments will not allow blasting on the weekends, cause their, their concern is there's more people out and about that, that aren't necessarily in a controlled manner going from, to and from work.
This is also in a quarter away from where people would be, it's down at that end street.
It's typically not allowed.
We typically require non, avoid the weekends, avoid late evenings for construction times anyway.
Right.
But it's a, it was a thought I was having.
So I know you said there's a thousand feet maybe, but I'm just thinking a little bit about the veterinary school that's very close to you the site, and I mean, they treat twenty-six thousand animals a year, so, and animals feel things a little different than people. So how, have you thought about how that might affect the?
We've done, um, several different jobs really close, a lot closer to, um, some other, um, facilities that, that have animals in them, and I actually think there may have been some blasting up on that site at one point. I know we bid some work up there that we didn't get, but, um, again, you know, the best thing we can offer is to notify. And if they have animals that have, uh, special considerations, maybe they can bring them into a, a different area, but.
Yeah, it's not the surgery situation, cause you won't be close enough for that. They do a lot of surgery, but it won't be like that. Okay, interesting.
I got one more question. Was I under, the understanding that this technique would be different than maybe other techniques used before due to the, like, logistics of this site, or this, kinda like the technique, or the, the same type of blasting that would be done on other sites?
This is a pretty standard approach to blasting in this state, in this area.
Fiona, was there ever, wasn't there something about like the drill or something that we reviewed at one point?
As part of this application?
I thought so, but maybe I'm getting.
I knew we were, we were discussing hammering, um, I can't recall.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure we did.
And then I guess the other question was, have you ever turned away a blast, like, due to site conditions? Like, is it, or like, what sort of things would you look out for in a site that, like, I guess poses the biggest risk?
Yeah, I mean, there's some applications where blasting is not an option. Um, you can be too close to a gas line, um, or any utility for that matter. Or just too close to an existing structure. Um, that being said, we have done projects, as you can see, um, earlier, you know, inside buildings. And there are certain applications where it's just not feasible to do so, and the risk isn't worth it.
I'm just gonna bring up the earthworks, and that was shared. This was.
I am, have a little background in noise. But you, most of the guidelines for noise levels that you usually see are for continuous noise, you know, like in a factory or something. Um, and I'm not sure I know numbers very well for, you know, an immediate, a ve- very short, uh, blast. I know that it, um, it's more, but, um, I'd be interested in a little more on what you said before. When you say a hundred and forty dB, uh, gonna need some context about that. I, I guess it's okay, you know, I guess it's gonna be okay. Reason I have hearing aids is the VA agrees that it was because we had training and someone was going bang near my ear. So, um, I'm sorta interested, but.
So the, the blasting, actually, the air overpressure isn't so much of a, a loud noise. It's, it's how the air is being affected because of the movement. And the one forty is considered safe, but the state holds us to a one thirty-three, so we can't go above one thirty-three.
Fortunately, there aren't a full lot of people really close.
We don't want anybody close to the blast anyway.
Right, um, you do have a few businesses, I think, still, around the rest of Centec, uh, as well as Primary Colors, of course.
Yeah, and, and again, it is most often described as kind of just distant thunder rolling, you know, the, it's a.
Think they may get bored with it before you get done, though, if it's gonna take that long.
We hope.
Okay, any more on that? Okay. Thank you. We have anything more? Um, all right, come on.
Again, Jim Brown, owner of Primary Colors. Question, we have near constant traffic coming trucks, and it's unpredictable. How does that affect, will, will, will they stop the trucks before they come down? You'll have someone, and just for a matter of minutes?
Correct, yeah. It's, it's typical to about a light cycle delay is what I would equate it to. Yeah, but we would have a security.
Angie, just come up to any microphone, folks.
Um, yeah, so.
You could sit, it's not be good stuff.
So yes, in regards to stopping traffic, um, coming down Millennium Drive, we would have a sentry posted out there to make sure that nobody is entering the blast zone during this, and, and it wouldn't be very long. It'd be the equivalent of a traffic light.
And any concerns on the road, um, damage to the road in the proximity to, I mean, obviously, you're in.
So basically, um, the way to damage something from blasting would be in close proximity. It, it's, uh, referred to as block displacement, so you'd actually have to push up the earth underneath that to, to move that, that area. In, in this scenario, we're, um, pretty far away from the road, so that would be a concern. Thank you.
That just reminded me, well, come on now, I just have a second. It reminded me, oh, uh, the traffic study. I think that the traffic study, uh, description of the entrance, the location of the entrance was maybe for the previous iteration of the plan. And, uh, you know, it ought to be, ought to be sure that it's, I don't think it changes anything, but it'd be.
I think we mentioned that briefly at our last hearing on this.
Mm-hmm, and then there were some revisions that were turned in.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, uh, for Matt, for the presentation this evening. Hopefully, it answered a, a number of questions. The, uh, Bill Lovett from Claremont Companies, uh, we did receive, as Fiona alluded to earlier, a number of peer reviews today. We are happy to have Alan and Major speak generally to the comments that they received. And on behalf of Ty and Bond, who's the traffic engineer that we, um, had solicited to do our, um, analysis. We did receive, at the end of the day, comments from, um, from Bowman. We, I spoke, we have had a very preliminary review of those comments. I anticipate after speaking to them that within two weeks, we would have, uh, responses to those comments. And hopefully, after that, we would, you know, maybe a week or so for, um, for Bowman to review the comments just to keep the process rolling with regard to the peer review. Um, with that, I'm happy to introduce Paul from Alan and Major to speak to the, uh, peer review comments that he was able to take a look at.
Good evening, Paul Matos with Alan and Major Associates. As mentioned, we did get the peer review comments from Graves early this morning, and we did have a chance to review. He identified about eighteen comments. Approximately ten of those are just kinda minor notes. Nothing really to, to be addressed or commented on, so I'll kinda go through this. Uh, one, again, is really not any issues. It just talks about how the, the plants aren't really, uh, have any issues with the Grafton bylaws except for what he noted. Uh, two, he wants us to update the land usage table on the cover page to include impervious percent, the percentage of impervious cover on the property, which we have no issues with doing that. We could take care of that. Uh, comment three talked about identifying snow storage on the plants. We'll take care of adding that to the revised plans and addressing that on responses to the comments. Uh, comments four and five, uh, kinda go together, and they talk about the transfer of property that we got from Primary Colors on this, uh, southwest corner. Uh, that was taken care of by an A and R plan that was endorsed by the planning board back in September of twenty twenty-three. And, uh, easements were also addressed on that plan, showing the sewer easements extending onto the property. So we'll provide a copy of that A and R plan to Graves. That plan is recorded at the Registry of Deeds in Plan Book Page Nine, Plan Book Nine Seventy-four, Page Thirty. Comment six, again, it was just in regards to the wetlands bylaw. He had no comments except for what is noted as number seven. And that relates to the drainage report and, uh, calculations for TSS removal associated with the stormwater management system. Uh, the calculations provided in the report, I, I think you may be confused on the way the tables was presented. Uh, one of the tables showed what the TSS removal was prior to infiltration, which showed, uh, us getting sixty-two percent. And then the other one was the table of the overall system as it functions together with, uh, the water quality structures and deep-sump hood catch basins. But again, we'll coordinate with Graves and get that issue resolved, and that shouldn't be a problem. Uh, comment eight talked about, uh, compliance with, uh, stormwater management. Again, he has no comments relative to that. Uh, number nine talks about the hydrology. Again, it's just a statement saying that he found them in, in order. And, uh, comment ten talks about stormwater handbook with, uh, no issues except for what is noted. And comments eleven, he talks about soil testings for the subsurface systems two and three. Again, we relied on the McFail, uh, geotechnical report as when we designed the systems. All our stormwater management systems are located on the East Lee side, which is the side that's on the fill. And basically, our stormwater systems have been designed to be at grade or in the fill areas. So we're gonna go out and do some confirmatory test bits, just to satisfy the, the comment and get it resolved. Uh, comments twelve, he reviewed the pipe sizing calculations, and he found them in order. And the only comment he had is that he wanted us to provide a double graded catch basin for Catch Basin Eleven, which is located by this island here. And Catch Basin Twelve is located on the gutter line here. He wanted those to be double graded catch basins. Uh, I see no issues with it. We could, we'll probably accommodate his request and, and have it addressed, not a problem. Number, comment number fourteen talks about the retaining walls adjacent to the subsurface systems one and two, here and here, to be, uh, designed for hydrostatic pressures. That's not an issue. We've already discussed that with the geotechnical record, so he's well aware of that. Comment fifteen, uh, he wants us to provide a truck turning movement with, uh, appropriate fire apparatuses. So we'll take care of providing that on the set of revised plans. And comment sixteen, he talked about, uh, there's an existing catch basin located at the middle of this entrance. And because that catch basin has a great inlet stone, he wants us to, uh, install another catch basin up gradient. So that way, we're not having, uh, water bypass that catch basin because we're eliminating the great inlet. So again, we'll have to discuss that with, uh, Claremont and, and figure out if we're gonna provide that or provide some justifications on why or not. And then comments seventeen and eighteen are just, uh, informational comments with nothing really to address. That he didn't review the traffic impact study, and, uh, we'll comply with the comments from the water district and the sewer department, so. Anybody has any comments or questions in regards to the engineering peer review letter? I'll try to answer them.
Uh, I just have a procedural comment. Um, the, the format that we typically use is, if, if you could just very clearly, like, state Graves' comment and then your response in bold. I do have a template that I can share with you as well. But it's, it's just very easy, it's much easier for us to track.
Yeah, that's typically what we do on other projects, so, yeah.
Pretty standard. We've seen some crazy things in the past, so should elaborate on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's a nice segue, Fiona, into the date of delivery. So we would have, we expect a delivery for you on that around the third of June. Um, the twenty-fourth of June, I think, is our next evening with you?
Yes.
Yeah, as noted before, our.
We have a, yeah, the tenth is for.
No room on our schedule for the tenth.
On the tenth, you're doing a dual meeting, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, well, we're, we're not gonna be here, right? We're gonna be in Shrewsbury.
We don't wanna go to Shrewsbury, so.
And, and I don't think that their planning board has room for us after we do the thing we're doing up there.
We understand.
So what we'd. Fully committed for the tenth.
What we'd like to do is have Bowman's, uh, response ready for them as well. May I ask whether or not it's okay for our engineers to talk directly with your peer reviewers?
I think we'll.
I think that happens a lot.
That happens frequently.
Yeah, so that'll speed the process up, and we expect to have both peer reviews clearly responded to. Perhaps another recent reaction from your peer reviewer, that'll make twenty-fourth a, a pretty easy evening.
Yeah, I think with, with five weeks
Yeah.
to deal, to deal that, yes, you know, in, unless something really unusual comes up that turns out to be time-consuming to deal with, yeah, there, the five weeks ought to be plenty of time for a couple rounds of peer review and response.
That's our hope as well, and I have read the peer review from Bowman, and I don't think there's any earth-shattering news there, so.
Yep, and I'll, I'll just say, too, that if we have materials in the meantime added, you know, given to staff and added to the, you know, website, some, we can always, as board members, talk directly to staff, not amongst ourselves, if we have questions or concerns that we want to see addressed before the meeting as well.
Great.
I, I will say Maureen Lapperton from Bowman is on, if you.
Yes, I saw her.
Okay, if you, if you had any specific questions, or she need to elaborate on anything. Not sure if we wanna.
Yeah, that came in, that came in pretty late today, so.
Yeah, so I think it was.
No one's really had time to thoroughly, I did, I did have time to skim through it, and I didn't see any surprises.
Well, I'm not gonna be shy about it. If things go well between now and the twenty-fourth, we're actually hoping that we might close the public hearing that night.
If we, if we end the day on the twenty-fourth with no open issues, that's possible.
That's our hope.
Um, I, I think probably I mentioned it before, but the, for, the, the traffic study we started with noted a deficiency, actually noted two things at the intersection of Pine Street and Route Thirty. And, uh, I'm even more concerned, um, cause there's a lot of growth in that area now, and, and, um, I don't know whether future growth in the studies included what UPS is going to possibly provide. So that, that is an area that I'm quite concerned with. I don't want the town ending up with a bigger problem there. And, um, you know, that's, that's gonna be a, an even better route, right up to twenty for lots of people. People going up, and also people coming to the train station, so.
We'll flag that for Ty and Bond, and we'll make sure that they cover that with Bowman.
All right.
Okay. If you, oh.
Thank you, just one last moment. Is there anything else, and maybe we can work with Fiona, um, over the next few weeks to see if there are any other loose ends that need to be tied up, and would be happy to be prepared to, to speak to and address those?
Yeah, and I, I can, if I may, Ms. Chair, I, yeah, I'm happy to, to work with you, but I, I don't see any, any other loose ends other than what we've just discussed. I did get an opinion from council, um, about de, um, had the application DB. It's from our general bylaw, and that was, you know, our council confirmed that. It, it, it's fine. We, we, no cause for concern. I mean, I don't know if Mark wanted to say anything specific about that or saw, saw that uploaded in the exhibits. I just, I haven't reviewed many of these myself, so I was just being overly cautious and just wanted to get that legal opinion, but it's uploaded in the, in the exhibits, exhibit, um, so, twenty-three. Um, that, that was my, my major concerns, but it's, it's squashed now, so.
And their opinion is remarkably clear for a legal opinion.
It is nice to, when counsel answers the question. Doesn't always happen.
Sometimes he does, sometimes. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I think we're pretty much there. Uh, do you want to request a continuation of the hearing until Jan, uh, June twenty, uh, June twenty? I think we're pretty much there. Do you want to request a continuation of the hearing until Jan, June twenty, June twenty-fourth?
Yes, we'd like to.
Would you like to?
The necessary paperwork there.
So I'll move that we grant the applicants in a few moments upcoming written request to continue this hearing until June twenty-fourth. Twenty twenty-four at seven thirty PM.
Second, moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Davidson. Mr. Robbins. I vote aye. Mr. Veca Trumman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll see you on the twenty-fourth. Brings us back to, I believe, general, general business bills. There's at least one bill.
Oh, we do. I move we pay our bills.
I'll second it then.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Davidson. Mr. Robbins. I vote aye. Mr. Veca Trumman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Minutes of previous meetings. None. Staff report.
Okay, I have a few things. I, I'm going to touch on just three key things so we can get out of here. So the, it was mentioned earlier in this meeting that we have a joint hearing on May twenty-eighth. With the select board for the appointment of our member to replace Jim. We will miss you very much, but thank you for your time here and. Best of luck. Thank you, Mark. We also have tentatively slated appointment. I'm sorry, tentatively slated joint hearing for the associate position on June eighteenth. I'm working out the logistics of that with the TA's office. But I just want that to be on everybody's radar, so May twenty-eighth, June sixth, June eighteenth.
As of now, how many responses do we have for the full position?
One, one interested person for the, for Jim's position and one interested person for the associate.
Thank you.
Yep. This came up today, it was odd. We, we got a public records request for. The High Point Development, which is a forty B project in town that some folks are familiar with and some folks might not be as familiar with. It's been going on for quite some time. That, that project is almost at the tail end, I believe, because they're trying to get, get teed up for the determination of completeness process with the ZBA, it's very similar to Elm, Elmok Drive. There was a, a public records request that was made for any correspondence with boards or applicable entities. About that project as of January first, twenty twenty-three. Typically, boards aren't CC'd on this type of correspondence, but I know, Mr. Hassenger was, was CC'd on that. So I confirm that to mean if. You were acting on behalf of the planning board and discussed the High Point subdivision, we're probably going to need to coordinate. Getting that information to the town clerk. I don't think that that should be an issue as, as this is really not something that's been on this board's radar. Especially since January first of twenty twenty-three. Mr. Hassenger did tell me that way back when. When they were trying to get their original approvals, that was, it was, the, the planning board was a lot more involved, but then they went the forty B route. So I don't think this is an issue, but I would just ask you to please check your, check your inbox and if you were. You know, acting in the capacity of a board member and discussing the project with town staff or other board members that you, you know, you coordinate with me directly. And I'll get the information to Kenny.
We're part of public records requests, you know, we are, we have to comply with them technically, but. Yeah, I don't remember us ever discussing that at all. And additionally, at least this board is very good about not really discussing anything in email.
Right, I, I, I don't think this is an issue, but, but because this, it was flagged for Bob and the, and the board. I just thought I would bring it up. I can, let me see if I can just pull up the request very quickly so that we. So this is one, there was two. So there was a quest for any and all emails between any member of the ZBA and any other entity concerning High Point, which is kind of vague, but. And then there was another one here. All plans and communications between the developer. And the town of Grafton. That one is, is, is staff, pertaining to staff, more so than anything, but. Just wanted to flag it. Other than that, I think I'll stop there. I think we've seen.
That's a public records request. If someone had had a private email, that wouldn't be in the public records. So it wouldn't be subject to this request.
Right, but if you were emailing me, for example, about an agenda item that the ZBA had, the, you know, really. High Point, you were talking to me about High Point and, and acting in my capacity as, you know, the planner and asking questions about it or what have you. That, that would be something that we would need to.
I think it also applies even if, even if it's one to one amongst the board members too, I believe that also applies.
Actually don't know.
I think, either way, I would, I would send it to Kenny if it was, if I had anything and go from there.
I don't think that's a public record, but anyway, I don't think anybody has anything to do with it. That was about, what, twenty years ago more?
That project goes back more than twenty years.
More than.
But the, the most recent involvement of which I can, that I can recall. The most recent involvement of the planning board of this project was, and this is before January twenty-three. We had one meeting kind of joint or with the planning board regarding the determination of completeness. And the acceptance of the roadway, where we concluded that by saying it was, understanding number one, that it was nowhere near ready for that. And number two, it wasn't the planning board's responsibility. But that's the only, in, in, to the best of my recollection, in the fourteen years I've been on the board. That's the only time the board was in any way involved with that project.
Right, right, yeah, it's, it's really hasn't had to cross our, our path too much, so thankfully, because it's very.
Anything else?
I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. There's a ton of stuff going on, but I think we want to get out of here.
Well, we all want to know about the ton of stuff, but. Not on the agenda.
Agenda item eight and a half, ton of stuff.
Anything you want to say about the lot release for the board's knowledge?
Not yet.
Okay.
We tabled that. Is that the one we?
We'll, we'll, we'll handle it after.
A little while. We're going to record.
I didn't see anything on correspondence that caught my eye.
I saw Bob closing his computer and noticed we still had correspondence. There was one notice that we received today that. For a meeting, public meeting for the Unified Planning Work Program. Other than that.
Bob, I had one update before we closed the meeting.
Hello? Say, say again.
I have one update. I have one update to provide before we close the meeting.
Go on, go on.
So the library building planning committee was officially disbanded as of today. It's accomplished the task. Some of the members have been on it since, I heard, since twenty eleven. A long journey comes to an end.
Congrats, that's exciting.
Yes.
I was not on it since twenty eleven.
Was there any outstanding punch list items that they still need to address or is that all set?
All set and there were a few, which is all outside of the punch list, so. I think the last time, I guess two years ago was when the punch list items were all created and they, we have gone through all of it.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I'm only interested in that door to the. Bottom, just to the ground floor where the water came in and the design. There, whether it's design or execution, that's caused a lot of trouble.
Hearing that was disbanded, we will not need that on our appointment sheet. When we do the appointments.
Yeah, well, well, because we'll be doing reorganization. Actually.
Oh, yes, sorry, I just blanked on, okay, I get what you're saying, yes, okay, I will make sure to, I was.
I'm not sure whether we want to reorganize in Shrewsbury.
Normally that would be the time we do it, but I think we can safely defer it for one meeting.
My, my opinion is twenty-fourth for the reorganization.
Yes, yes, we've moved it. All right, let me make sure that I write that down in a. Sheet here. Okay.
Okay, well, if there's nothing more that can legally come before us.
I move that readjourn this public meeting.
Second, moved in second. Is there any, oh, it's not, it's not debatable.
Italia has her hand up.
Well, I'll let her discuss, discuss it.
No, it was just that I already have it on the agenda for the twenty-fourth regarding the board reorganizing, et cetera, and the signature sheet from.
Good thinking.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. I vote aye. Mr. Veca Trumman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye. Motion is unanimously approved. We're done, but we have to sign some.